Good afternoon. We call this meeting to order at 1:33 PM. First, we'll start with roll call. Commissioner Alexander. President. Commissioner Brown.
President.
Commissioner Flick. President. Commissioner Jordan.
Present.
Commissioner Stewart.
Present.
Thank you. First, we're looking for approval of adoption of the meeting minutes from the April 25th meeting.
So move by Commissioner Stewart.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, seconded by Commissioner Alexander. Second was Commissioner Alexander. Please, value machines. Approval of meeting minutes passes. I'll read the formal public hearing rules. The City Planning Commission has established certain rules governing the procedures to be followed at public hearings. Before speaking, each person shall give their name, address, and state whom he or she is representing. Proponents with the proposal will speak for, will speak first for a period of 10 minutes. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Opponents or other interested parties will speak second for a period of 15 minutes. Each speaker shall have, shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Proponents will be allowed a period of six minutes for rebuttal. Each speaker shall be allowed a maximum of two minutes. Opponents will not be allowed to rebut. No material, written matter, photographs, maps, etc. will be accepted by the commission or its staff at any time during this public hearing. This procedure shall be followed, except at such time when the president officer shall, with the approval of the commission numbers present, extend such time. And with that, we'll start with our first zoning docket, 1223.
About now. Okay. The city council recently passed motion M 2312 in response to a sharp increase in vehicular crimes occurring primarily in parking facilities in the central business district and the periphery of the French Quarter during major events, which is Saints and Pelicans home games. This motion directs the City Planning Commission to explore the efficacy of amending the U standards of Article 20, Section 2300, 23001, and 23002, as well as any related regulations to add crime mitigation measures, such as parking lot attendants, panic buttons, and/or lighting alterations. Currently, parking lots and lighting are addressed in multiple sections throughout the CZO. However, it should be noted that all current regulations pertaining to parking lots, lighting, and/or landscaping are only applicable to new parking and parking gar- and/or parking garages, parking lots that undergo a significant improvement, and are not applied retroactively to facilities that may predate the current ordinance. And considering its recommendations, staff reviewed literature on the subject of parking lot management and crime mitigation to determine best practices and determine how those practices might best fit into the comprehensive zoning ordinance, which is first and foremost a land use of urban design document rather than a law enforcement document. And its assessment of literature, staff found that crime mitigation practices are typically broken into two basic categories, one being passive measures and the other being active. Passive measures are typically proactive and aim to define a space. Examples include fencing, curb cuts, and landscaping, adequate lighting, and active maintenance of the space. Active measures are typically reactionary and often responses to crime after they occur. Active measures may include panic buttons, onsite security personnel, and video surveillance. While the CZO is best suited to provide for passive measures, staff noted that there is a precedent for some active security measures. Examples of active security measures in the CZO include the requirement for security and operations plans and exterior surveillance, which is a requirement in the U standards of bars, amusement parks, and restaurants. To better understand the current parking conditions as they relate to industry best practices, staff worked with the NOPD Crime Analysis Unit to obtain a data set of all vehicular crimes between January 2022 and February 2023. For the purpose of analysis, vehicular crime was defined here as incidents occurring to vehicles, such as theft, as well as the theft of the vehicles themselves. The NOPD data set totaled over 3,000 incidents throughout the subject area. Using this data set, staff was able to determine parking facilities, it determined, it deemed to be the most vulnerable to these crimes based on the volume of repeat incidents. Figure one and figure two in the staff report provide us the spatial distribution of vehicular crime. And on table one, you'll see a list of the 20 facilities deemed to be the most vulnerable, which staff uses a proxy to study the greater parking lot safety issue. You'll see some patterns emerge regarding their conditions with poor lighting being the most common denominator. Most of the vulnerable lots were surface lots rather than garages, and all the surface lots were deficient parking lot-related regulations in the CZO, including landscape requirements. These lots often featured poorly-defined space, and while many included fencing, fencing was often substandard, including poorly-maintained, single-link-style chain fencing noted in figure four of the staff report. It's notable that most, if not all, of the vulnerable facilities and staff's analysis precede current parking regulations and lighting regulations in the CZO. While the CZO currently includes many regulations that are in keeping with crime mitigation and design best practices, including Article 237, which outlines parking lot landscape and fencing requirements, the city is unable to enforce these regulations on many of the largest and most problematic surface lots. However, staff did find areas for improvement in the current, in the current use and lighting standards. Staff recommends modified approval of requested text amendment, including amending Article 23001 Parking Structure U standards to include security and operations plans to be approved by safety impairments, as well as exterior and interior security cameras. Amending Article 23001 Parking Lots U standards to include security and operations plans and to require one short lighting fixture for every 10 spaces in compliance with the current light trespass regulations in Article 215. Staff believes these amendments are currently the best options to address public safety concerns while keeping with the intent of the CZO as a, as a land use and design document. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few cards. Ryan Berger. Put your name and address, please.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ryan Berger. I represent my family's company. We own and/or operate several parking lots around the French Quarter area. I first would like to applaud staff and the commission and city council for addressing the issue of crime. Obviously, that is a significant issue for our city. And we, on behalf of the citizens of New Orleans, I applaud the efforts. And on behalf of the parking industry, I just want to make clear that we are here and ready to do what we can to assist the commission staff and council in that pursuit. Obviously, there are limits to what parking owners and operators can do to stem the systemic causes of and solution to crime in New Orleans. But again, we're here and we are willing, ready, and able to implement creative solutions to address in the small corner of the world that we can. I think the broad strokes of what has been laid out related to security and operation plan, related to cameras and lighting, and as taken up by council staffing, is a good start. We need to get into specifics, but the lights, camera, and through staffing action is a great way to start. And just want to once again emphasize the parking industry wants to be an active partner in this. We would like to get to the details so that we can all come up with a workable solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question for Mr. Berger. So you're in support of the text amendment as it's written in the report? Or just as, as you said, a start?
Generally, but yes. Yes. I think there's some details that we need to work through, but yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Sherman.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mike Sherman, 800 Bron Street, New Orleans, 70113. On behalf of several parking lot operators, including the Berger Company, Park First, Premium, and others. First of all, thank you for the deferral for a couple of weeks. We were able to have some really good conversations among industry and actually exchange best practices. I think the commission will be happy to know that a lot of the recommendations in here, which are not effective legally against existing lots, are already being implemented, as Ryan said. Lights, camera, action. Technology has been very helpful by getting cameras, lights. And I think some of the things that are not mandatory to existing parking lots will already be implemented, so the code's a good guide. The big takeaway here is that there's very few new parking lots coming online. The current CZO, there are conditional use in the prime areas or prohibited. So if they were to ever come on, there's already a procedural mechanism in place, but this is a good change to code. It works. The second super important thing is that when this motion was passed by Councilmember Harris, Councilmember King did propose a city code change, which staff noted was important as the CZO is a design document and land use document. That ordinance with industry and stakeholder participation passed, and that has already been changed into law. So we're pleased to support staff's very good work here. Lights, camera, action. We think it's a workable plan and the parking lot industry. I commend them for really coming to the table to help figure out how we can get voluntary compliance, considering a lot of this won't be legally enforceable on existing lots.
Thank you. I have one more card. Glenn. Cannot read the last name.
Sorry, the pencil wasn't working real well. Glenn Armentraut, I'm the New Orleans Market President for Premium Parking, one of the largest parking operators here in the city. So I want to echo to the comments that were just made by Mike and Mr. Berger. But also, we're here standing at the ready to help support any of the safety measures we can put in place to divert some of the crime that's happening, like lighting and security cameras already, and, and, you know, been a priority in our locations and again, here to support the efforts that we're trying to do to the city and be a good partner. So, thank you.
Thank you. Those are, those are all the cards I have for this docket. If there's any questions of staff in the commission or motion.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Brown, seconded by Commissioner Wintory. Is there any discussion? Matt will call the question. Motion passes. Next is zoning docket 1423.
Zoning docket 1423 considers the creation of affordable homeownership opportunities and directs the City Planning Commission to consider the community land trust model to define and create standards for affordable homeownership development. The comprehensive zoning ordinance currently regulates affordable housing in four ways. The affordable housing plan development, the small multifamily affordable dwelling, voluntary inclusionary zoning, or VIZ, and mandatory inclusionary zoning, or MIZ. These affordable housing types only contemplate affordable housing rental units. This text amendment considers the integration of affordable homeownership regulations with accompanying zoning incentives, such as reduced off-street parking requirements and density bonuses. Unlike the MIZ and VIZ for affordable rental developments, incentives for affordable for-sale developments may be applied to all developments regardless of unit number. During implementation of the mandatory inclusionary program, it was determined the homeownership side of implementation was much more complicated, given the pilot administration and monitoring processes. Additionally, the staff heard from for-profit and nonprofit affordable housing developers and housing advocates that the adopted AMI level specific to homeownership and the period of affordability needed adjustment since homeownership development metrics are different from multifamily rental development metrics. Thus, it was decided to postpone the implementation of the for-sale homeownership IZ program until further considerations regarding for-sale IZ were evaluated. Additionally, on April 22, 2022, the City Planning Commission held a public hearing and made a recommendation to the mayor and the city council that a market feasibility is necessary, given the changes in the market experience during COVID and the growing affordable, affordable housing prices. The market feasibility scope includes a requirement to specifically look at the feasibility of homeownership IZ as well as other considerations. The staff anticipates having this information and requested data will be beneficial in incorporating homeownership IZ incentives and regulations into the comprehensive zoning ordinance through a subsequent tax amendment. Because a market feasibility analysis is not complete at the time of this tax amendment, the staff recommends only voluntary inclusionary zoning regulations to address affordable homeownership opportunities at this time and addresses, and addresses in possible mandatory inclusionary zoning regulations once the analysis is complete. After discussions with two community land trusts in the city, the staff decided not to incorporate community land trusts as a requirement for the affordability of homeownership developments as they would severely limit the locations in which the affordable housing developments could be located and would depend on only two organizations, one of which does not currently offer homeownership opportunities for the implementation of these regulations. As such, the staff recommends that for, for-sale housing developments contain fewer than 10 for-sale dwelling units that voluntarily set aside at least one unit or developments containing 10 or more for-sale dwelling units that set aside at least 10% of units, up to 120% of the area meeting income. With an affordability period of five years, they receive a 50% parking reduction, a buy rate density bonus of 30%, a 30% reduction in the lot width requirements, and where applicable, a 30% reduction in the floor area ratio or far. The five-year affordability period will ensure the home buyer will be permitted to sell their home and receive the same equity and wealth-building opportunity as any other home buyer. And the 120% AMI level permits the develop, permits the developer greater leniency for families just over 100% AMI, who, according to affordable housing developers, also need some extra leniency. Staff would also like to include additional language to the proposed recommendation, which would be located in Article 28, Section 28.5.2.8.2 of the CZO. The recommended language is as follows. When a subdivision proposes to create new lots that are substandard of the zoning district's lot width and/or lot area requirements pursuant to Article 28.5.2.8.1, the lot width or lot area deficiency shall not prevent the subdivision from being eligible for administrative approval. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the requirements of the inclusionary zoning regulations in Chapter 26 of the City Code are fulfilled. The recommended voluntary inclusionary zoning regulations for affordable homeownership opportunities will act as an interim measure until a market feasibility analysis is concluded. This analysis will inform future staff recommendations to possibly implement affordable homeownership requirements in the next iteration of the mandatory inclusionary zoning regulations. Therefore, the staff recommends modified approval of zoning docket 1423.
Thank you. I have two cards.
Wait, can we, can we have questions for staff?
Sure.
We proceed with that. So you're talking, you're saying that right now we're just proceeding with the voluntary portion of this and going back to stakeholders?
No. So there is a market feasibility analysis in the works.
Okay.
So we're holding off and recommending recommendations for the mandatory inclusionary zoning aspect of this until we have that feasibility analysis to inform our recommendations.
Okay. And one of the other questions I had, I mean, it is complicated. I agree with you on that because I had trouble with, with understanding some of how this works. Specifically, the trust remains the owner of the property, correct? The land trust? Land trust, correct?
So we're not recommending that a land trust be included as part of these recommendations. It was a consideration in the motion to
Okay.
to review.
Okay. So we're just accommodating this conceptual idea that's not yet formed yet into our zoning ordinance?
Right. Well, right now, we do have voluntary inclusionary zoning for rental units.
Right.
But we don't have it for homeownership. So this is including regulations that address homeownership opportunities as well.
No, I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm specifically asking is the stakeholders that were listed here, I don't see the neighborhoods. Were they included at all?
We just talked with the developers to see what would be feasible as part of the voluntary part of this. As part of the, the text amendment for the mandatory inclusionary zoning, there'll probably be more stakeholder outreach.
Okay. So, but right now, what we're trying to do is amend the text to accommodate some future concept that's yet to be
Well, it would be codified should it be approved. So it wouldn't be in the future. It would just be volunteer, voluntarily implemented. So it's not anything that would be mandatory, such as the MIZ right now.
Okay. So, but the, but the idea is that the land would be held in a trust once identified and
There would be no trusts associated with this.
Well, who owns the land then?
It would be the property owner, the home buyer.
The home buyer does own the land?
Yes.
Okay. So how does, how does that mechanism work with the purchase of the, of the property and then the development of the
And Kelly is also here, and I might have her come up and speak to some of the regulatory mechanisms of this.
And I'll, I'll release it to others if anybody else has questions because I didn't see that that was in the report that
So yeah, it would have to go through the zoning department within the, in the Department of Safety and Employments to review their AMI level, and there, there would be a deed covenant associated with
Okay.
the purchase. I don't know where Kelly is.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. If you have questions regarding the regulatory aspect of it, Kelly can answer. She oversees all of the inclusionary zoning aspect within the CZO.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Kelly, would you like to come up?
Okay. So this isn't, the, the idea of creating a trust is not something that's being addressed or contemplated here.
So there was conversation, as Rachel mentioned, you know, after we implemented IZ, which did include at that time an affordable component, which we put a pin in to address some, some of the issues that we, we recognized after implementing IZ. Through those conversations, one of the things that came about was perhaps looking at partnering with a land was perhaps looking at partnering with a land trust that could assist in maintaining that property for a longer period of affordability. If you recall, our IZ is for 99 years, and so that was the homeownership side of it as well. And at the time, prior to having an IZ office, we did not have the capacity to deal with resale formulas, to deal with monitoring and compliance that went along with it. So we put that pin in it. This motion asked us to look at that land trust model again, and so that's the stakeholders that we reached out to Rachel and I in the city to determine what the capacity for that was because despite the city having an IZ office now, a land trust would be possibly a good partner in that developer, who also may not be an affordable housing developer for the mandatory side, could partner with them. They could take over the compliance monitoring. The city could work with them. Anyway, we would hope maybe we could get there at some point or the city had its own land trust. These are all capacity-building measures that we're hoping to get to, but we're not quite there yet. So this proposal right now is to create a voluntary inclusionary zoning that would put people in an affordable homeownership opportunity as a first-time homebuyer without including a land trust currently. So as an example, a developer has four lots. They want to build lots. They're going to get some density bonuses with it, maybe a parking bonus with this. And for that, the city is going to offer them this density bonus and ask that you put one of these units aside as affordable for this homebuyer. We would regulate that through my office where we would make sure that there's an AMI homebuyer-eligible person, family that would go into this property. We would ensure that during the affordability period that that maintained if there was for sale during that time. So this is, I don't want to dismiss it, but it's kind of like a baby step of us getting to a broader policy, which once we have some more metrics and study and understand the neighborhoods, like you mentioned, what that would look like, that we could then implement this larger, broader program. But right now, we are doing it as voluntary with a pretty high AMI. 120% is going to open this up to kind of more of the mid-range homebuyer. In our conversation, I know this is way more than you guys asked for, but I'm up here. So and I know you've got a long agenda, but you know, it's, we need homebuyers at every level, and we're hoping, you know, that some of our homeownership housing builders, affordable homeownership can maybe take advantage of this and create some homeownership opportunities, alleviating some of that lower-range market. You know, everybody's all competing for these same lower rents. And so anyway, so this is a baby step for us to get there, to figure out what the kinks are, what it is, and grow this into more homeownership opportunities eventually.
Appreciate it, thank you. And just the only reason I mentioned the stakeholders was when I read the bonuses, the density bonuses and the parking, the loosening of the parking, it gave me pause just because of what we've been through with the doubles to dorms uptown. And so that's why I was sort of rung that bell. And the land trust, since we're not addressing that now, it also made me wonder, you know, if this is to promote some sort of equity building for first-time homebuyers if they're not able to participate in the escalation in land value and they're only getting a depreciating asset, then that's not really what I think is the best part of this.
Right, no, you're hitting some important points, which during our conversations, that was, you know, in talking to developers and understanding the cost of what it actually takes to build a property. And we don't currently have subsidy for a developer. We don't have subsidy to give to a homebuyer. And so what can we do through the zoning code that could help this? We need a much more robust conversation and more partners at the table. And we're hoping to get there. This is putting just kind of this base
I get it.
here that we can grow that.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here to answer my questions.
Absolutely, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, I have two cards. First is Leah LeBlanc. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Leah LeBlanc, live on Oak Street. The Greater New Orleans Housing Alliance and Housing NOLA support this zoning docket as a stepping stone towards eventually creating affordable homeownership development opportunities under the mandatory inclusionary zoning with payment and lieu being directed towards homeownership NOFA for affordable housing developers to take advantage of. This zoning docket is a step in the right direction and fills the gaps of the original smart housing mix set in place many years ago. We look forward to this policy working in tandem with the inclusionary zoning offices' updated market feasibility analysis as we continue this conversation around systemically addressing our city's affordable housing crisis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Maxwell Cardulo.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell Cardulo, Louisiana Fair Housing Action Center. I want to echo what Leah said. This is something we've been working on for a long time and has been in the part of conversations for a long time, especially this voluntary part. It makes, there's no reason to delay this. This is for developers who want to do the right thing, who want to create an affordable unit or two in addition to the market rate ones, and they want to engage with the city in the compliance piece, and so we should make that as easy as possible. The only thing I'll note, though, is that the five-year affordability term is half as long as the affordability term in our current soft second program. A lot of the buyers for these homes may be coming through that program that were receiving a subsidy from the city. If the city is giving them that subsidy and saying, we're keeping the unit, we have to make sure the unit stays affordable for 10 years and you can't turn it around and flip it immediately and make a profit. I don't see why we shouldn't do that for 10 years on this end as well. And I just want to also correct the record here for a quick second. I wrote my master's thesis on community land trusts, and I just want to make it clear that they are a really incredible tool to preserve affordability for homeownership. They have been incredibly successful. They actually were born out of the civil rights movement and about community control of land, and they do allow people to build equity. And in fact, here in New Orleans, not only do you build equity, but there's an agreement with the assessor that community land trust homes do not have to pay taxes on the land underneath them. So it's actually a hedge against gentrification in a lot of places and can actually be a really great boon that folks who are first-time homebuyers and other programs don't have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have for this docket. Is there any questions for staff or a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for modified approval of zoning docket 01423.
Whittry will second.
I am, I'm going to make, I'm not going to vote in favor just because I think something of this magnitude needs to go to committee, which I know we've kind of gotten out of practice of doing that, but we did that with the subdivision regulations. So I think that there are some questions that we might want to dive into, in particular, things that Kelly mentioned. And that I, I mean, if everybody's in favor of going forward, I am too. But as Chair of the Zoning Committee, I think this is something that needs to go back to committee.
Is this on deadline?
Yes.
It is?
It is, and just a quick note that the motion should include the additional language that I read into the record regarding the subdivisions.
Is there any other discussion?
Is there a reason we did not have this in committee? Just wondering.
I'm not aware of any reasons in particular. This was sent as a text amendment, which gave us a pretty tight deadline to get it to the commission. And that probably played a role in our decision.
All right, thanks.
Is there any other discussion or voting machines? Motion passes. Next up is zoning docket 1923.
Yes, ZD 1923. This is a request for a zoning change from an H U R M 1, Historic Urban Multifamily Residential District to an H U B 1 A Historic Urban Neighborhood Business District. It's a property that's located at the, it's a vacant lot at the corner of Barone Street and Jackson Avenue, and the applicant would like to use the property as a commercial use with an accessory parking lot that would contain some fast-charging electric stations. The applicant revised its original request to reason the site as an H U M U mixed-use district to request instead a zoning change to the most restrictive commercial zoning district available, which is H U B 1 A, the neighborhood business district. The issue is that the site is located in the residential medium-density pre-war designation, which is intended toward residential development and generally allows commercial zoning only for properties with existing commercial structures. The master plan both states that business, traditional corner stores and mixed-use developments may be allowed where current or former commercial use is verified. It also states that conversion to multifamily, neighborhood-serving, commercial, or mixed-use may be allowed for historical, institutional, or other non-residential structures. Since the site has a history of commercial use, it was previously a gas station, but that commercial structure has been demolished and the site is currently vacant, the proposal is not consistent with the second statement, which prevents staff from from supporting the request because it doesn't meet the spot zone policy. However, while the request does not meet this one specific aspect of the master plan, we believe that considering the length of time the site has been vacant, its location at a corner of a major street, its former use as a gas station, and the underground contamination impacts that it may have, the site may be more suitable for commercial use than residential. Since this is a kind of different case than what we're dealing with typically, we actually have our brownfield manager here, Carrie Gatto, who is sitting at the table. She can give a short history of contamination on the site and explain the connection with assessment and remediation funding from the state. So I'm going to let her go a little bit more in-depth on that.
Hello. The records sourced from the state LDEQ by the City of New Orleans CPC Brownfield Program show multiple underground storage tanks were removed from the property in question in 1985. The LDEQ Underground Storage Tank Division submitted a no-further-interest letter dated February 21, 1991. That being said, although the changes in environmental regulations in the last 30 years, the LDEQ will need to reassess the property to confirm it is free from contamination for impending construction.
Thank you. I have no cards on this docket item. Is there anyone here to speak? Please state your name and address, and you can fill out a card.
Okay. My name is Cornelius Payne, 833 Jackson Avenue. I'm the owner of the property. As staff mentioned, the property was a former gas station, and I want to piggyback and echo what staff is saying and to react to what Ms. Carrie on staff. The property, the gas station, the property had gas tanks back in 1980 and was removed in 1985. This commercial zoning is needed in order to move forward with LDEQ to get this clearance so I can put a commercial structure on the project and also put for a fast charging station. Additionally, I would like for staff and for the commission to respectfully take into consideration, if I can, receive special consideration. During the master plan in 2015, we didn't even think about green infrastructure, and in today's, like, green infrastructure is something new that is going forward, and this is what I'm trying to put on this site along with a commercial use. I have changed my stance of going from immune zoning to B 1 A, which is the most restrictive. I have not had any opposition. The neighbors in full support. They're really excited about having something on this corner. It is, as staff mentions, on a major street, and I'm here to answer any questions that I can ask about the property you may have about the property.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Are there any questions for staff or a motion? Look for the record that Commissioner Whittry has recused herself.
I have a question for staff. Has the applicant provided any kind of plan for these electro-charging stations?
So yes and no. This is just purely a zoning change application, so there's no plans associated with it. Originally, in the previous request, the applicant was asking for a zoning change to H U M U and a conditional use to an accessory parking lot, sorry, principal parking lot. In that application, a site plan for the parking lot was provided, which was essentially just a parking lot covering the entire surface, no building, because the request was for a principal parking lot. In modifying their request to a zoning change to H U B 1 A, they will have to build a structure typically that, you know, forms the corner and then have an accessory parking lot behind it where they can provide those fast-charging stations. But the parking lot will be accessory, and because it doesn't require a conditional use, we're not going to be reviewing plans with our request.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, since it's a busy intersection, that it had standards.
Yeah, it would have, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or a motion?
I make a motion to approve zoning docket 01923. Sorry, to deny. Correct?
Oh, to Are you recommending to?
I'm going with the staff's recommendation.
So all recommendation is actually a denial?
Correct.
Because even though we find that there is more reason to approve it than deny it, we're dealing with a standard of compliance with the master plan that doesn't provide language. The spot zoning policy as it is only allows for rezoning to commercial zoning category when there is an existing commercial structure, which is not the case here despite the history of commercial use. But that's all the reason we can't recommend approval. But for the other reasons listed in the report, we think it may be appropriate to have a commercial zoning.
You'll retract your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I will make another motion for approval of zoning docket 1923. I know typically we consider the master plan and wanting to be in alignment there, but we know we're preparing for updates to the master plan really soon, and this just, it doesn't make sense for us not to move forward with something that already has precedent and willing to get behind it, so.
Second by Commissioner Stewart.
I was going to second as well, but Commissioner Stewart beat me to it. But I think we should on the record, and I'm going to consult with legal on this. We need to somehow address the fact that this commission believes that somehow this is in compliance with the master plan. That's usually how we do it.
Commissioner Brown, I can probably speak to the master plan issue a bit. So the issue here is the staff has to deal with both the master plan and the spot zoning policy. Language in the master plan simply says that to have commercial zoning, a property must have a history of commercial use. It doesn't explicitly say there needs to be a structure there. So you could read the master plan as allowing the zoning change. So you could read the master plan as allowing the zoning change because of the history of commercial use. We typically read it in a way that requires there to be a structure, because that also overlaps with the spot zoning policy, which is a policy, it is not law.
Okay.
The spot zoning policy does require a structure, so all of that is to say, there is a way of concluding this, that this is consistent with the master plan despite the absence of a structure.
Okay, so, it kept, thank you, Stephen, and with that, I I think Commissioner Stewart seconded it, but if we could put that on the record that we find that, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll call the question. Flash flood warning? Until 3:45?
It's not showing up yet. It's not showing up for voting.
We'll vote on machines. It'll be six yeas with one recusal. Motion passes, best of luck. Next up is zoning docket 2223.
Zoning docket 2223 is an application for a conditional use to permit the new construction of a restaurant at this property, which is on the corner of Upper Line and Fred, which is, of course, within the Fred Street Commercial Corridor uptown. The proposal is to develop this site as kind of an indoor-outdoor restaurant, primarily by using shipping containers as the dominant construction element. The conditional use approval is required due to the size of the restaurant. When this was previously considered at the April 11th meeting, we suggested a number of design changes. The use of shipping containers by itself isn't necessarily problematic, but it has to be done in a very sensitive way that sort of aligns with the built, the building pattern along this segment of Fred Street. We've received updated plans last Friday, haven't had the chance to review them and update the report in response. And so we are requesting deferral of this to the next meeting on the 23rd to allow us to do that, and this will be on deadline at that next meeting on the 23rd.
Thank you. I have no cards for this, so we're looking for a motion for deferral for the May 23rd meeting. I'll make a motion to defer this docket item to the May 23rd meeting.
Witry will second.
Thank you. If there's no discussion, we'll call the question. Motion defer passes. Zoning docket 2723.
This is a request for conditional use for the Velvet Cactus Restaurant in Lakeview. So the applicant